The city of Apache Junction council meeting for November eighth, nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four to order and ask everyone to put their cellphones in silence. The invocation will be led by Councilman Heck, the pledge by Councilmember Schroeder.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege and freedom we have of being able to gather together this evening to discuss city business. We ask that you give the staff and council wisdom and clarity in their decision making. Please keep us mindful that we serve the residents of this city. We ask you to watch over the men and women who serve in our military the world over. Keep them safe in these troubling and turbulent times. We ask also for your blessing on our first responders, including our police and fire departments, along with our EMS personnel. Please keep the brave men and women safe in their duties to protect and care for the residents of this city. Thank you for the honor and privilege we have to serve the residents of this city. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
I introduce to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Wilson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schroeder.
Present.
Councilmember Cross.
Here.
Councilmember Heck.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Nesser.
Present.
Councilmember Soller.
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Consent agenda. As a reminder, all items under consent agenda will be approved with one motion. If a council member wishes to remove an item for further discussion, the request must be made prior to approving the consent agenda and will be moved to new business. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Soller.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroeder.
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser.
Yes.
Councilmember Cross.
Yes.
Councilmember Heck.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay. Excuse me. Awards and presentations and proclamations, and I have one here. Commitment to volunteerism in Apache Junction, whereas the city of Apache Junction firmly believes that values of compassion, empathy, and community support are the foundation of united and harmonious society. Whereas the strength and prosperity of our cities, town, and villages are based on the selfishness of its residents to serve and uplift one another. And whereas we acknowledge the profound impact that can be achieved when we extend a helping hand to our neighbors, especially those in diverse backgrounds. And whereas we nurture a culture of giving within our cities emphasizing that volunteerism is just not a duty, but also a source of personal fulfillment and community strength. And whereas we urge all citizens to care for one another, volunteer, and engage in acts of service and kindness that contribute to our city's betterment and its inability's of well-being regardless of background or belief. Now therefore I, Chip Wilson, Mayor of the city of Apache Junction, do hereby proclaim the city of Apache Junction's commitment to volunteerism and service. And I'm going to make one quick comment. We have a lot of people in our community that volunteer and do a lot for our, the city. We just recognized last week, the last meeting, we had someone from the chamber for our welcome to the city. Has been involved in volunteering for our community for, what was it, almost twenty years? Nineteen years. And we have a lot that work in the police departments and other areas of our community that serve it. And I want to say a special thank you to everyone that's been involved.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
We do have someone here to receive the proclamation and he'd also like to just speak very briefly. Bob Verzigg, why don't you come up?
Oh, okay.
Bob, you met with about this proclamation.
Oh, okay.
He'd like to just share a few thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Wilson and honorable councilmembers. I represent Just Serve and I am honored to be able to accept your proclamation of volunteerism for Just Serve. And we would honor the privilege to work with this city as well as the residents of Apache Junction as we continue to create good feelings and volunteerism through the city. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, why don't you come on up and we'll get a picture with the mayor here.
Okay. Inner government updates. Anyone have anything they want to bring up?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I don't, was there going to be some, was from the current events, or anything about the Veterans Day events at all or not?
I don't believe, please share.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I had the opportunity to participate in the Veterans Day parade on the eleventh as well as the Veterans Tribute following that. And I am, I am so thankful this city absolutely recognizes and remembers and honors its veterans. I know we have a lot of veterans that live in this city, but it's wonderful that this city continues every year to recognize and honor those folks. And I think that says a lot about this city. There was a Veterans Tribute after that that was in the Chamber parking lot. And I wanted to take a moment to recognize our, one of our city council members, Bambi Johnson. She probably doesn't want me to do this, but. Bambi was given the Quilt of Honor through the VFW, which is a wonderful tribute. And I can't think of anybody else that would deserve it more than Bambi. She has given selflessly to the VFW and serving veterans, not just in Arizona, but around the country. So I think she absolutely deserved that and just want to say again, thank you for your service.
And as a veteran, I also say thank you too. Anyone else? Okay, I've got a few things. First off, I attended the ribbon cutting of the Giving Machine over in Gilbert. And there's a picture of the Giving Machine. It's the unit that you can dispense and select the amount you want to donate to the organizations that you can purchase for service. You can purchase, for example, a number of meals that are going to be served from five dollars to over a hundred dollars that have. It sits organizations that help people that are homeless or in need of assistance across the valley. There is one that provides reading books for assistance in young children to help them learn to read. The groups involved in the machine are Ares Foundation, CC Hope Center, Tempe Community Action Agency, Save the Family, United Food Bank, and Kids Need to Read. And it's located at the Gilbert Theater in, I'm going to say downtown Gilbert. And definitely it's a neat opportunity, especially for everyone. Today I had the opportunity to go out and see some of the tours of the new businesses and upcoming manufacturing facilities at the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport. The first one we visited was one half completed right now is Gulfstream Aircraft Maintenance Facilities. There's a picture of us all at the, sitting around a wonderful aircraft that are being worked on. This facility is, half of it is in operation now. It's very busy. The hangar was full and they are getting ready to double the size of the operation. They also serve jets that are in need of, of being, I want to say manufactured facilities. There's, it's one of the things that's really unique and they, you know, keep those airplanes flying good. The second facility we went to was a manufacturing facility for Xenergy Climate Systems. And this is a picture of the floor that's going to be in the manufacturing area. It's a complete building, new, that is starting manufacturing of air conditioning operations. They're hopeful of starting operation in the late spring of two thousand twenty-five. They're going to need right now, they say over five, fifty employees to start. And when they're in full operation, another hundred to a hundred and twenty-five people to help continue on. The third stop is Virgin Galactic Manufacturing Facilities. This would be building spacecraft to fly into space and return with passengers. They currently have a small craft that takes two passengers into space. And this new craft that's going to be built here is going to be holding six passengers to be able to take into space. They are planning to build many aircraft and have them located in many areas throughout the world to perform these flights. The spacecraft will be mounted on a mothership here and then get launched into, up into the air. And then from there they'll go into, into space. And this is also a very large facilities. And they're starting, getting ready to start building their first aircraft. They also need several people to start their training and start their first aircraft. And they expect to hire between fifty and one hundred people fairly soon. It was very interesting to see what's going on there and see the growth out there at the airport and how really in sense we're on the cusp of some, I want to say some fantastic opportunities for employment in a very short distance away. Okay. City managers report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bryant Powell, just a couple items to report tonight, and then I have a new introduction of a new staff member that we are going to do. I just wanted to say that one thing that was kind of neat through the Veterans Day Parade timeframe is the League of Arizona Cities and Towns on their social media account showed off the top five cities and towns that have continuation of parades. And our city is in the top five, right there with Mesa, Tucson, like the longstanding cities, so no surprise. I think it's thirty-six years. I can't remember the number exactly, but it's something to be very proud of. So, thank you, Councilmember Heck for bringing that up. And then I just wanted to remind everybody, we're on the street for the RFP for the downtown. RFP, and we're accepting proposals for the redevelopment and continue to be super, super excited for that opportunity because we now are not just zoning and talking about that type of land use, but the city government actually owns ten acres. With that, we have Eli, one item I think up for current, any items on that?
No events tonight. So I'll turn the time over to Kayla, Director of Marketing and Communications.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight I have the pleasure of introducing the newest member of our marketing and communications team, Gina Skorza. Gina will be serving as the city's new Public Information Officer, playing an important role with our ongoing media coverage, our community outreach initiatives, our upcoming CLI, and really just engaging with residents across all our various platforms as we continue to share the wonderful things happening here in our community. She brings to our team a great scope of experience, having served in a PIO role with three different municipalities in the state of California, most recently with the city of San Diego. And we are certainly fortunate to have her on board and look forward to seeing the many contributions she'll make to our team. So with that, I would love to turn it over to Gina to just share a few words.
Hi, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm Gina Skorza, Public Information Officer. A little bit about myself, I'm actually born in Texas, but I grew up in the military, so I called many places home. I started my career in public service volunteering at a public library. So I subsequently got hired as a PIO and it's been a passion of mine ever since. I've been a PIO for over five years, working at municipalities that range of population from thirty thousand to a million. And I'm really excited to join this team and to promote Apache Junction to the media as well as our community members. And I truly don't think I'll get over how beautiful the views are here. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. Okay. Presentation, discussion, excuse me, public hearing in consideration of ordinance number fifteen fifty-six. Addison.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Nick Leftwich, Planner for Development Services Department in the city of Apache Junction. I'll actually be filling in for Addison tonight. He is our, he was our intern. He finished his term just recently in between the last meeting you had with him and today. So I will be covering tonight. Case P twenty-four eighty-three AM is a proposed text, sorry, let me pull that up. Get that presentation. Case P twenty-four eighty-three AM is a proposed text amendment to the zoning ordinances, section one six nineteen regarding the accessory dwelling units per the requirements of the Arizona House Bill twenty-seven twenty. To give some context, earlier this year, the Arizona Legislature passed House Bill twenty-seven twenty on May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four. The idea behind it is that in order to address Arizona's housing needs, the legislator believed that by reducing the city's regulations on accessory dwelling units, that would be able to better facilitate the building of more accessory dwelling units and hope to alleviate the housing situation with that. And so in passing this bill, they require that all municipalities would amend any existing accessory dwelling unit regulations that conflicted with the state statutes that, that were adopted at that time. So these, the text amendment was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission on October eighth. They voted five to one. And Addison presented some of this case information to you a couple weeks ago on November fourth. So as a brief summary of what this bill directly affects within our own zoning ordinance. Per House Bill twenty-seven twenty, cities can no longer prohibit the use or advertisement of accessory dwelling units, guest homes, casitas, mother-in-law suites, whatever term they are, we have them all under the umbrella of accessory dwelling units. They can, a, a city can no longer prohibit the use of those for a long-term rental. We can no longer require a pre-existing relationship between owner and occupant. Currently, our zoning ordinance says that if you are going to have a guest inside your accessory dwelling unit, they would need to be friend or family. And the idea was is that it wouldn't be a separate rental sublet from the property. But the new state law preempts that. The House Bill twenty-seven twenty requires that cities can't regulate the design of an accessory dwelling unit. And it prohibits implementing any regulations on accessory dwelling units that are stricter than the regulations for the main house of that property. And it also sets that we cannot enforce a side or rear setback greater than five feet. So with that, just as a brief overview of the changes, again outlining it, we have modified the code to remove the design requirement of our current ordinance. Instead, we have added a recommendation. Not necessarily enforceable, but in this case, just in order to facilitate harmony within neighborhoods, still, still trying to promote the ideal of having a cohesive neighborhood and design. We recommend that the building and design complement that of the main building, but it is no longer a strict requirement. As we cannot require pre-existing relationships, we have simply removed item number five from the accessory dwelling unit section. As we cannot enforce a zoning regulation on an ADU stricter than that of the main building, we no longer require that the maximum height of a accessory dwelling unit is set at twenty-five feet. Instead, it is whatever the zoning district's maximum height is for the main building. Also noted is that our city code currently prohibits that accessory dwelling units would be used as separate rentals. Again, as the state law preempts that, we have modified the text to say that rentals are permitted. The state law does define what a long-term rental is as it was included in this text. So per the statute that had been modified, ARS, Article nine, Section four hundred sixty-one point eighteen, long-term rental means rental use in which the tenant holds a lease of ninety days or longer or on a month-by-month basis. So some question that came up prior in the work session of how this would affect an Airbnb, for instance. In terms of those being denoted as vacation rentals or regulated slightly differently under lodging laws, they would still be technically prohibited under our ordinance. The state law did not preempt that. But this, the state bill now allows that all of these ADUs can be used as separate rentals on a long-term basis. Also noted is that our current ordinance requires that an accessory dwelling unit shall not be any larger than fifty percent of the main building square footage. Per the terms of the bill, an accessory dwelling unit shall not be larger than seventy-five percent of the main building square footage or one thousand square feet, whichever is less. And one of the things that was noted in the work session is to clear up some ambiguity, especially as this change in rentals has affected how these accessory dwelling units may be used. We have modified the text of the addressing section, addressing and utilities section to be more clear, as well as to be modified so that it specifically permits that accessory dwelling units may have a separate address unit identifier, utility services meters, and a sewer septic system as needed. And so with this, staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend the approval of text amendment P twenty-four eighty-three AM through ordinance number fifteen fifty-six and ask for your consideration tonight. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Yes.
Nick, one question. In the changes that were made, and I noticed it here, that it deletes any narrative related to subletting. Does that mean now that someone can rent an ADU and then they can just go ahead and sublet it to somebody else? And the owner doesn't have any say over that? Is that now how that works?
Your Honor, Councilmember Heck, thank you. We don't specifically have a regulation in the zoning ordinance regarding subletting in general. If someone were, so as, as there isn't a regulation on it, if someone were to be a renter and to sublet a room, that is not something we have purview and, or really say in, so the answer would be yes. But that is, that is just how the rentals are under, under the current law, since we, the zoning ordinance, North City Code, have specific say in how, how people rent and rents out their house.
There was some warning in one of the changes that talked about not being able to sublet. The owner or the lessee not being able to sublet. Is there, am I, can you just?
Yes, let me go back to that. So under the current, the way that the zoning ordinance is currently written, in order to kind of preclude people from using accessory dwelling units as something other than a guest house or having it as a second rental unit, the current zoning ordinance prohibits any kind of separate rental, separate renting, any kind of subletting. There's not like a specific relationship regarding, I guess, subletting, but rather just any kind of separate rental of the accessory dwelling unit was prohibited. As the state law precludes that and allows that accessory dwelling unit to be rented separately, whether it's whether it's sublet from someone renting the whole property, or whether it's someone who owns the property and just chooses to rent their ADU separately. Essentially, the state law just precludes that whole thing, and they're allowed to rent it as they will.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I believe that more rentals would be done where in the rental lease, the property owner who is doing the rental would be the one who states that there would be no sublease.
But you can't do that, though, right?
Well, the city ordinance can't do that.
So an individual homeowner could, they could, they could do it. They could say, "You may not sublet."
Yes.
Really?
Okay, so. A homeowner may set those terms, but in terms of how the city is involved in the regulation of the accessory dwelling units, we would not have a ordinance affecting that.
Okay. That's a little confusing to me, but.
So Nick, earlier in the presentation, you had mentioned something along the lines where the city can't determine what this dwelling looks like.
That would be correct, yes.
So how does this, how does the Home Suite Home program then affect this?
That is an excellent question. It is something that we have had a lot of discussion with as we were working through the Home Suite Home program. So the Home Suite Home program has a very specific standard set of plans, where if someone accepts them from the city as we provide free home plans, they would have to build the home exactly as presented in the plans. And were they to make modifications after they build the home, they would be able to do so. But when they build the home, it has to be exactly to those plans, exactly as they are. So.
But Nick, this is, it doesn't impact accessory dwellings, right? The Home Suite Home doesn't have.
Could a casino be an accessory dwelling?
We have noted that some, the smallest of the Home Suite Home plans could be used as a accessory dwelling unit. I've answered some questions about that personally.
So I mean, I guess what I'm asking is, well, if the city on one hand can't determine the way it looks, but for financial incentive to go with the Home Suite Home program, it seems like conflict. I mean, so in other words, that if I wanted to build how I want it, based on just the idea that the city can't determine what it looks like, I would not be able to take advantage of that program, because otherwise, the city is telling me that if I want to save some money on engineering stamps and things like that, I want to do this, your predetermined plans. But if you can't tell me how it should look, then I'm not being able to take advantage of that?
Thank you. I believe that's a conflict of two different programs. Anyone would be able to use the Home Suite Home plans. And us requiring that they are built exactly as they are isn't a conflict with this as it is a requirement of the Home Suite Home program. Because in order to use these pre-designed plans by an architect, they have to use the plans to the exact letter and line of the architect's plans. And that's specific to, in order to use the building plans, they can't modify them.
Vice Mayor Schroeder, let us go back and work with staff and get a better answer on that, just to clarify and make sure we understand how this impacts that specific program.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Schroeder, the way the Home Suite Home program works is anyone in Apache Junction who lives inside the city can request a free set of house plans, but those plans cannot be modified. If you want to modify the plans, then now you have to work with the architect who designed those plans to do additional modifications.
And at that point, we wouldn't say.
At that point.
And at that point, we would, based on this law.
And that's between whoever requires the plans, whatever additional modifications they want to make, they would then have to pay the architect for additional design services.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Regarding the Home Suite Home, it's the structure itself that cannot be modified. But when it comes to the outside of how you paint it, what kind of finish, if you want a brick house, you can make the outside brick. If you want it stucco, you could do stucco. If you want lapboard, you could do lapboard. For the finish, correct?
There are, I believe there are exterior options. Of course, you can paint it however you want, whether or not the plan's provided that amount of variety as far as it can be brick, or it can be stucco, or it can be something else. I don't think we threw that much variety in there. There might be a couple of elevation options. For example, I think one of the things was either an enclosed garage or carport. So there are certain things you can do within the set of plans that's already approved. There are certain options, yes, right.
Okay, I'm supposed to ask the applicant, but I don't see anyone from the state legislation here that wants to come forward.
Good luck on that.
All right. Now I'll call for a public hearing. There's a five-minute time limit with a one-minute warning that you will hear. Please state your name and address for the record. Anyone like to speak on this?
Good evening. Andre Meek, 1327 South Bel Air here in AJ. Mr. Mayor, Council. My thing is, okay, you have an ADU. You don't have to have an address on it. So is it, how is it considered a separate dwelling if you, like, basically you have a building and you kind of fly by night, convert it, and you rent it out, not letting anybody know or anything like that? You know, no taxes are paid, no permits are filed, or nothing like that? How is it, you know, I mean, is it just going to be allowed? Or, you know, are ADUs going to have to be like registered in the city? As, you know, if you're going to rent a place, or if you're going to have an ADU, well, it has to be, you know, listed as such? Or, you know, I'm just wondering about that. And then, you know, if it doesn't have an address, how does it work on the tax rolls? Because, you know, if you have two residences, you know, like, if you own a second residence as a rental, well, that affects your income tax base and everything like that, you know, how you pay. So I'm just wondering how that's going to play out. And then another thing, you know, everything here is stick-built. Are prefabs allowed, you know? No prefabs, and we'll be allowed in no matter what? So, you know, because it just says "site-built," and that's it. Okay. That's pretty much my comments on it.
Donna Carr, Apache Junction resident. I thought something like this is more or less already covered in a mother-in-law home, to have a separate dwelling. So I guess a couple of questions I have is, does it matter what size your property is that you can put a second dwelling in? And if you have a mobile home, does that mean you can pull another mobile home in beside it and call that a second dwelling? I'm just wondering is, because I'm thinking that a lot of this is going to make the area look a lot more trashy. I had a neighbor who was renting her shed out to a crackhead, and I get a little sick of that. So I'm just wondering is how all the rules are set up and whether or not you can just turn around and decide that even though you have a small lot, that you can build a second home on it. Thanks.
Anyone else want to speak? Rudy, you want to make comments?
Mr. Mayor, in regards to Mr. Meek's questions, like an apartment property, 461 West Apache Trail, Unit A, Unit B. So in a sense, there would be different unit numbers. It would be the same block number, street address, but you can have it Unit A, Unit B, Unit C, whatever the case may be. How the property is taxed is up to the assessor. We don't tax properties. And I believe we are now somewhat precluded from collecting rental taxes? So once again, that doesn't affect us. The, Ms. Carr, her question, if you have a mobile home as the principal dwelling on a property, and you want to build an accessory dwelling unit, it needs to be a conventional structure. Even if the main structure is a mobile home, the accessory dwelling unit has to be a conventional structure. And there is no limit on how small a lot you can build an accessory dwelling unit, as long as it fits.
And that's because of who?
Because of the state.
Or how many?
Clarification, is something, how many accessory dwelling units are allowed on a given property? Depends on the size of the property. Right now, I think the law allows for one, but that may change in the future. Zoning, of course, may allow more. If you're zone multifamily, then conceivably, you can have whatever the multifamily zone allows. But on a single-family residence-owned property, as of right now, you can build an additional dwelling unit.
And kit-type homes, where you buy the walls already pre-manufactured, alls you do is assemble everything on-site, that would be considered a site-built home.
As long as it is international building code compliant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they would have to have a permit for it, correct?
Yes. Even though, in the case of the free, I'm sorry, the Home Suite Home plans, you still need to apply for a permit and do the inspections and, you know, the, there are still some fees, development fees if a property's never been developed, those kinds of things. So they are not completely free from fees, just the construction drawings are free.
Your Honor.
Yes.
As I understand it, every one of the changes that we're seeing on here that's been brought to us are because we actually have no choice but to change our code to match what the state just mandated. So we're just getting the words correct by state mandate?
We are bringing our code into compliance with the state, and new law, yes.
Yeah, that's one of the comments I was going to make. If you got an objection to it, you need to contact your state legislators.
Your Honor, Councilmember Cross. To address the number question, as Rudy said, it is one currently. I will note something we are not changing, but that the state has mandated once we hit 75,000 people in population. This, the same bill, and so that's, that's a bridge we'll cross later. But this bill does require that when we hit a population threshold of 75,000 people, as determined by the census, each property can also have another detached or attached accessory dwelling unit. And then the state law also introduces a provision where if a third unit is rent-controlled, and how that's determined has been ambiguous. I've attended state conferences on the topic, and other municipalities are still trying to figure that out. But the state law has noted that a third rent-controlled accessory dwelling unit could be permitted on a property, too. So.
Regardless of square footage?
That is, that is correct. So that is something that we see within the state law. It is something that we did, it would be a pretty drastic change from where we're at right now, and it was not required for us to do that today. So we are not bringing that to you. But I wanted it to be known that that is also one of the effects of House Bill 2720.
Yeah, I knew that. I'll tell you honestly, I voiced my opinion concerning it with our state legislators, met with them, and they determined that this was the answer to the number of needed homes in the entire valley. So therefore, they, or the entire state, excuse me. So they implemented the law and did not pay attention to us that had been there to meet with them to try to, I'll say, give them some reasons why. Okay. All comments aside now, get off my soapbox here. Now I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mayor.
Yes.
I move that ordinance number 1556 be read by title only, and the reading of the entire ordinance be waived, and call upon a city clerk to read ordinance number 1556 by title only.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Heck.
Yes.
Councilmember Cross.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroeder.
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Soller.
Yes.
Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor. Ordinance number 1556, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, amending Apache Junction City Code, Volume 2, Land Development Code, Chapter 1, Zoning Ordinance, Article 1-6, Supplemental Regulations by Amending in its entirety, 1-6-19, Accessory Dwelling Units, repealing any conflicting provisions, providing for severability, and providing for penalties.
Main motion?
I move that ordinance 1556 be read by the city clerk, be approved and adopted.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Soller.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroeder.
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser.
Whether we like it or not, yes.
Councilmember Cross.
Under protest, yes.
Councilmember Heck.
Yes.
Mayor Wilson.
Also under protest, yes.
Motion passes.
Presentation, discussion, a public hearing, consideration of ordinance number 1557. There you are.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Thain Danako. I'm a planning and tenant staff with the city. Tonight, I will be presenting the case P-24-84-AM, text amendment to Article 1-16 Administration passed Senate Bill 1162. So here is a little background. This text amendment is required in order our city code to comply with Senate Bill 1162, which was passed on April 23, 2024. The bill has two components that every Arizona municipality must adopt in their zoning ordinances by January 1, 2025. First of all, the bill excludes government-owned properties from rezoning protest calculations. And second, the bill requires municipalities to adopt an application review timeline for rezoning cases, also known as short-clock requirement. So the case was presented during Planning and Zoning Public Hearing on October 8, and the commission unanimously voted 6 to 0 to recommend approval. And the case was also presented during city council work session on November 4, 2024. So moving on to the changes that we need to make. So to address the bill's requirement, we need to revise our existing zoning code. Our current zoning code already outlines the regulation regarding rezoning protest. However, the Senate Bill 1162 excludes government-owned property within 20% calculation of property owners within 150 feet. What do we mean by that? So for example, if there were 10 properties in a rezoning area, and three of them were owned by government entities, so in that case, that 20% calculation will be calculated based on the remaining seven properties owned by private individuals. So essentially, this change made it easier for private property owners to file a written protest against rezoning cases. Moving on to the next thing. To comply with the bill, we need to add a new section called Application Review Timeline for Rezoning Cases. This Application Review Timeline does not apply to plant developments. So when we receive a rezoning application, the city must issue a notice within 30 days indicating whether the application is complete or not. If the city does not issue the notice within 30 days, that application must be considered complete by default. When the applicant submits the required documents, the city will have 15 days to determine whether the application is complete. So when we consider the application is complete, the city must approve or deny the case within 180 days, which is six months. And extensions are allowed for the city. It will be only one-time 30-day extension for extenuating circumstances. And for applicant, additional 30-day extensions may be granted if they request. With that, staff and Planning and Zoning Commission recommend the approval of the text amendment case With that, staff and Planning and Zoning Commission recommend the approval of the text amendment case P dash twenty-four dash eighty-four and AM. This concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to take questions. Thank you.
Any questions?
No.
Nope. Okay. Okay, this is a public hearing, now we'll now give the five-minute time limit with a one-minute warning here. Please state your name and address for the record. Anyone like to speak on this? Seeing no motion, I will now close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your honor.
Yes.
I move that ordinance number fifteen fifty-seven be read by title only, and the reading of the entire ordinance be waived.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Cross.
Yes.
Councilmember Heck.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Soller.
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser.
Yes.
Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance number fifteen fifty-seven, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, amending Apache Junction City Code, Volume Two, Land Development Code, Chapter One, Zoning Ordinance, Article One dash sixteen, administration, by amending the table of sections, one dash sixteen dash six J protests against zoning map amendment, and adding new one dash sixteen dash seventeen, application review timeline, repealing any conflicting provisions, providing for severability, and providing for penalties.
Main motion now?
Your honor.
Yes.
I move that ordinance number fifteen fifty-seven is read by the city clerk, be approved.
Second.
Moved in seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Nesser.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cross.
Yes.
Councilmember Heck.
Yes.
Councilmember Soller.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder.
Yes.
Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Unanimous, your honor.
Presentation, discussion, and public hearing, consideration of ordinance number fifteen fifty-nine. Nicholas.
Good to be back up here, thank you, your honor, honorable counsel. Again, for the sake of the public, I'm Nick Leftwich, planner for Apache Junction's Development Services Department, and I'll be presenting the case information for P twenty-three, one hundred twelve PZ, Storebakan and Sons Construction Inc. zoning tonight. So the subject parcel of this rezoning is a one-point-six-acre parcel located on the south side of Old West Highway, just east of Royal Palm and south of Broadway. For some historical context, Storebakan and Sons, under the company SM Holdings LLC, bought this property a few years back with the presumption that they could use it for their intended purpose, which is a construction business with a contractor's office, a shop for fleet maintenance, and indoor-outdoor storage of their construction truck parking. And when they applied for their business license, it was resolved that it was not a zoning-compliant use for the B-one general commercial zoning district. Their operations were more industrial in nature and more suitable for a, a B-five industrial district. And so they were given a few options, either of relocating or to attempt a rezoning of this property in order to resolve the zoning non-conformity. And after consideration, they elected to attempt a rezoning and come before you tonight with this rezoning request. And the applicant has an applicant, has their own presentation. While we are looking at this aerial image, I will note, one of the questions that was raised in the work session a couple of weeks back was regarding the wellsite of the Apache Junction Water District, just immediately adjacent to this. There's some question regarding if there would be any concern of water contamination as they are, as they have some vehicle operations, oils. We have contacted the Apache Junction Water District, their director, and they noted that it is an old wellsite that is not in use, they do not have concern of contamination. The applicant has some further content in their presentation about other ways to maybe pre-prepare their property in order to further alleviate any concern of water contamination. But at least as far as it was noted in, in the Apache Junction Water District's comment, we don't have concern of, of direct contamination. So if I can look at the zoning context of this property, it is zone B-one, it's proposed to be rezoned to B-five industrial. As we look to the north of the site, across Old West Highway, there is other B-one general commercial properties. To the east and to the west of this property are multifamily residential properties. We have the Sonoma Apartments to the west, and then there is the future Old West Highway Village subdivision that is currently in the subdivision process. We are reviewing the final plat for that currently, and that would be to the east. And then we have the Palm Springs Single Family Subdivision to the south. Sorry, went backwards. Zooming up, out a bit to look at the general plan context of the area, it is, the adjacent area is as I just described. But as we look a little bit further south along Old West Highway, we do see industrial uses in the purple, this kind of magenta purple. And they propose that, matching the similar intensity, they are requesting a land use designation change from light industrial, or from, sorry, excuse me, from commercial to light industrial, business park and industrial. This is a site plan of what is currently there and how they propose to run their operations. So as noted, there is a singular office workshop building, the canopy under which they perform their vehicle maintenance, and then the remainder of the yard is where they have their construction trucks and equipment, that they, their trailers that they store. So although no further development of this site is proposed at this time, we are able to use this rezoning opportunity as, as an opportunity of, it triggers certain requirements that we can require some property improvements. Those include things like having a screening wall, since most of the site is surrounded by chain-link fence landscaping, some improvements on the, basic improvements on the building, the paint of it, for example, has been fairly deteriorated. So just, you're using this opportunity as a way to upkeep the building if it were to, if they are to stay. And also our dust control ordinance, as we look at the rest of the site, making sure that there is proper surfacing, making sure that it isn't something that is any kind of dust hazard for the neighborhood as they drive trucks and have circulation thereon. So as this is an industrial rezoning, the zoning ordinance does require an enlarged notification radius and further requirements, and the applicant has met those. A neighborhood meeting for this property and further rezoning was held at the Apache Junction Multi-Generational Center on June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four. No community members attended at that time, and I have not received further comment. And with that, the Apache Junction Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this case on a few weeks back, I'm sorry, my memory, excuse me. And they voted seven to zero to recommend the approval of P twenty-three, one hundred twelve. Subsequently, staff and Planning and Zoning Commission recommend the approval of ordinance fifteen fifty-nine, subject to the conditions of approval found in the staff report. So as noted, I'm here tonight to answer any questions you may have for staff. The applicant does have a presentation, they took notes regarding questions raised at the work session and are prepared to answer further questions if you have any regarding their operations and proposal.
Want to get the applicant first?
Yep.
Applicant, would you like to speak on this?
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. My name is Greg Loper, my address is two-two-five-seven-five West Mojave Street in Buckeye. Thank you for hearing us this evening on this rezoning case. I also need to thank Nick and Rudy for their assistance with this process, for working through us, working with us on the project and the stipulations that are proposed and coming forward tonight. As Nick mentioned, they, they purchased the property, it's had sporadic occupancy over the years. I think the last one was a tire shop. And for better or for worse, and I'm always reminded of the buyer beware when you look at real estate, but they purchased the property thinking that it had the correct zoning, that they weren't that different than the tire shop business or previous ones, but they, they are very different in that, therefore, the minor general plan amendment and rezoning is requested to bring them in compliance. As, as Nick noted, I'm gonna skip some of the presentation, but I can certainly come back to it. As Nick stated, when you had your work session, I was listening intently to the comments, and I thought I would try to address those first, but, and then I can certainly come back and talk about the overall project itself. As Nick mentioned, we have an exist, the existing screening is really chain-link on three sides, east, south, and west. There's some plant material, the apartments to the west, some of their landscaping is encroached and grown over. But with this rezoning, we would be taking that out, working with the apartments to address the encroachment of we, or weeds, plant material, and replacing that with a block wall. Along the frontage, we have a kind of a view fence. If you could see it here, you can see the area along that. We'll want to work with staff to see what we can do to make that more appropriate for them. If anything, it's, it's a good-looking fence, but there absolutely needs to be landscaping along that frontage as well in the site itself. But the first, one of the first comments I noted was in regards to the site screening, and then also along with that with the frontage. So with that, going back to screen real quick, staff proposes stipulation number two, which talks about a six-foot minimum opaque screen wall shall be installed in compliance with the zoning ordinance and code requirements. On the frontage, there's a different stipulation number six that talks about the types of plant material and ground cover and treatment that's supposed to be included along the frontage. And feel free to stop me at any time. The site landscaping, as I mentioned, that's also addressed under stipulation number six. We will have to again coordinate with the apartments to the west, their plant material is encroached over the property line. But we can get that resolved and replace that chain-link fence with a block wall, and also landscape the site to bring it into compliance with city requirements. One of the comments made at the council meeting two weeks ago, fourth, that would have been, no, that was fifteen days ago, apologies, was regarding the site surfacing. Presently, it's asphalt millings. We will work with the city to see if that's sufficient, if that type of material works, or if it needs to be thickened, or if additional material needs to be brought in. But the goal would be in, be in compliance with the city. There's not significant traffic movement through the day. It's trucks and construction equipment going off-site in the morning, coming back in the evening, potentially during the day if there's some maintenance or something needs to be done. But there's not a lot of cars going back and forth. But we will definitely be working with staff to make sure that that, the site is surfaced appropriately. The driveway is also asphalt millings. That will need to be beefed up somewhat. Staff covers that in stipulation number three, that the driveway and the driveway apron be improved to the, meeting the city's commercial driveway standards. That's more than just the asphalt millings. And if I could pause here for a second and explain why some of this stuff hasn't been done. If you can imagine, they've been in limbo for a couple of years now, hoping they'd get the zoning done, which is a process. But we had to go through that process and not wanting to put significant amount of improvements into the property. Although I, I would argue that some improvements have been done, the asphalt millings, the painting of the building, to bring it up, to make it look better. But their intent is, once the zoning is approved, which is hopefully this evening, that they would go full bore with the site improvements. Another comment is regarding the facade, this building was constructed in nineteen fifty-six. It's painted white with blue trim, let's go back to that photo, see that here. Staff is asking that we, under stipulation number five, that we bring the facade up, the standard and the look of it, and that we use a more desert slash earth-tone color. This is not a drive-by business, this is not a business that people drive by and say, oh, I think I'll, I'll talk to these guys about doing construction. So visibility is not as key as just identification for customers to be able to go, to find out where they're at. So we don't need the bright paint, but it was painting that was done, again, more or less to improve the appearance of it while we went through this process. There was also a comment about the repairs. Nobody off-site comes to get their vehicle repaired there. The only repairs that are done are to their own vehicles, their trucks or construction equipment. Those are done, they have kind of a garage, and they also have an awning. And within those areas are where all repairs are done. Another comment about the hours of operation, seven AM to five PM. Doesn't go extensively into the evening or super early. They are a seven-day-a-week operation as needed, but they like to be closed on the weekend when demand's not that great. And then there was a lot of discussion about runoff and potential contamination for the adjacent water district property. Number one, presently, best practices for stormwater protection are being done at the site. Again, all the, any repair is done in a specific area. So if there are spills or leaks or something, those areas have containment, they have a pan, they use, excuse me, I'm losing my place here, they use a pan to collect things, then they discard it off-site at a disposal facility. They keep a kit on-site for spills and things that may happen that are not within the repair areas, vehicles leak. My car certainly does, and there's a way to maintain that as well. One of the other things we can do, if there's some concern, is adjacent to that property, is build a little lip and grade the site so it goes inward, so that fluids don't run off in the event of a rain. And there's also training done for spill containment for the employees at the operation. And there is, there are regulations in place today through ADEQ that are enforced by the city, and certainly by ADEQ, in regard to stormwater pollution protection. And that, if you'd like, I could stop here, or I could go over the overall presentation, if you will, or bring up other, or address other items, turn it back over to you, mayor and members of the council.
I'm good.
Mayor.
Yes.
I just want to reiterate from the work session, I asked if there were any complaints on this property, and there were none. And you have apartment complexes to the west and homes to the south. And as far as I know, there have not been any complaints about this business, correct?
Yes, I may answer that. We inquired with both the police department and with our own court enforcement officials, and we have no record of complaints within this, this owner.
Likewise, the operator spoke to him about it, no, no mention of any complaints, nobody's gone up to them or called them or said anything regarding their operation, spills, noise, things like that. As you know, high, Old Highway, I want to call it sixty, because that's how I remember it, I'm that old. But Old West Highway does get a significant amount of traffic that probably drowns out whatever noise this would generate with vehicles starting up. And I'd also like to note that the property to the east that Nick mentioned that's being platted now, I represented them, and they're very much aware of this operation and have no issues at all. Hope that answers your question.
It did, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion from council? It's now the public hearing, there's a five-minute time limit with one-minute warning that you will hear. Please state your name and address for the record.
You know me, I always gotta say something. I don't know, when I was listening to him talk, I was also thinking about the fact of the towing place that was going in over on Tomahawk. And I asked at that time about that lot being lined. I mean, the dump can be lined, why not line areas that are potential for hazardous waste into the ground? And I know that the rain all comes downhill, so it comes from the mountains, and the people on the south side of the freeway. I know you're not, that you talk about the I know you're not, that you talk about the, the contamination of the water for probably Arizona water or city water or whatever, but there's people with individual wells. And I guess I look at that as a factor, and that you don't wanna contaminate just a individual person's well. I think that if they, even if they made it so that the water comes in, if it soaks down into the ground eventually, it's gonna spread. So again, I say that we, it should probably be lined. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Andre Meek, thirteen twenty-seven, South Bel Air, Mr. Mayor, Council. My biggest concern about this, being construction equipment, and I've been around construction equipment for a long time, working on it and everything, anything but pretty much impermeable surface for parking the vehicles, you're gonna have issues. You'll have fuel spillage, you can have an accident, you know, forklift hit a truck, got three hundred gallons of diesel on it, and it pops the tank. All that fuel's going right into the ground if all you have is asphalt millings. You're gonna have to have more of a asphalt, you know, solid asphalt surface. Working on the equipment inside, that's great. You know, the applicant mentioned using pans and everything like that. Pans get run over, accidents happen, and that's the biggest thing I see would be, you know, that type of pollution into the ground affecting the water. Also, that site right there, you can only make a right turn in, and you have to make a right turn out. So the approach for large pieces of equipment, you know, figuring, excuse me, that they're probably lowboys with tractors on them coming in and parking, or tanks or whatever, you know, that's gonna have to be addressed too, because the, the way traffic, being so close to the intersection right there, you get a truck stopping, and then you got people crossing right there off of Royal Palm. You know, you could get a backup real quick if you got a truck trying to get in there, and could cause some congestion and maybe some accidents right there at Royal Palm. Those are my biggest concerns, you know. They put a wall around it, that should take care of noise, it's seven to five, that doesn't really affect anything at night or anything like that. And, you know, if, if, if the potential pollution, accident considerations are, you know, if, if they're fielded, well, you know, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Mayor, can I address one question?
Wait, let me finish the public hearing. Anyone else? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Yes?
They've been in business for three years, never had an issue with traffic, as far as I know. So I don't think that's a major issue, because they seem to be able to get in and get out without causing any backups now, and they've been in business for three years. Agree. Hopefully, the city makes sure that they do due diligence on the type of ground cover for that area. But they seem to be doing a pretty good job. No complaints, no accidents.
Mayor?
Yes?
Can we ask Nick some more questions without opening the public hearing?
Yes.
Nick?
Your Honor, Councilmember Cross.
Thank you. Can, do they do any of the truck repairs and stuff over the top of the asphalt, or is there a concrete apron or part of the facility that they actually do the specific work on the vehicles where potential spills would be on concrete or asphalt versus the millings?
Per their narrative, at least the information they've conveyed to me, the work that they do on the vehicles is either in the garage or within the canopy area that has concrete underneath.
Okay, thank you.
Yes?
On that picture, diagram, where it showed behind the building, is that where the work is, under a canopy, you say? That A-B-C picture?
Right. In this case, the-
See the E?
It would not be the E. The, the canopy is, so there's, there's this box with A, and the rest of the building that we see that is not within this specific box is the canopy.
Right, but the E says that that's truck and equipment maintenance and parking. What does it mean by equipment maintenance? Truck and equipment maintenance behind the building?
I may ask the applicant for more clarification on that.
Because if that's outside of the building, my question is, and I'm not sure, you have a, a business here in town that repairs vehicles. Is there state requirements of where, how they do their work, their maintenance? And shouldn't this place have to be the same compliance?
Thank you. Thank you to the mayor and council members, if I could address a couple of things. When I talk about maintenance going on the back area, it's not, it's not vehicular maintenance, they're not rebuilding engines or doing heavy. It would be an area where maybe they might change a tire or do something, but really, any type of maintenance, they don't have a significant number of trucks. I think of my count, between trucks and excavators, they had, I think it was eight total. The area to the side of where that letter A is, is the canopy area, that's where they primarily do any kind of their repair work. That's where they've got a lift, they've got concrete they can press against, they, shade, as you can imagine, shade is significant need here at least six months of the year or more. So the, the maintenance in the outside area is very minimal. In retrospect, I probably should've just taken that off there, because I know that they do the actual vehicle work, either within the building underneath that canopy. And if I, if I could real quick, if it, if it mattered to the city, we certainly could beef up or go through kind of a stormwater pollution protection plan process with the city. I think it's probably gonna be a requirement as we rehab the site and the building anyway, and we could look at something more substantive than the asphalt millings. Again, there's not a significant amount of vehicular traffic. There is parking, and as I mentioned, my own car, a lot of miles, it leaks, leaks do occur. And so if it would be better, we could do some type of surfacing, a more impermeable surface, as the gentleman mentioned, and, and address that, take care of that, that was, that was needed.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor, Councilmember Nesser. To also address the other part of your question, all sites are, are subject to the, the state ADEQ, the Arizona Department of, of, excuse me, Arizona Department of Environmental Quality Regulations. And so if they were found to be in violation, and if they had contamination issues, they would be subject to regulatory consequences to those violations.
Okay, so what you're saying there then, in that picture where it shows where the vehicles are parked now, down here, like where F is, close and all, they wouldn't be able to go back there in the back and change the oil out of a truck or something like that, just out in the parking, where the parking area is?
They should be doing everything per their site plan, per their noted designation. If you mean to say, if we were to catch them changing their oil back there, if it were to cause a contamination issue, there would be consequences.
Okay, so, but ADE, ADEQ already controls that?
Yes, it's primarily under, and, and our, our stormwater coordinator is one of the primary contacts for that, making sure people are trained, the city staff is trained, so that when we are doing inspections or on-site, we are able to observe and report any kind of water contamination, site contamination, oils, and other, other potential contaminants. So we, we receive training on that as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I think you have to open it up for the public again, based on some of the other questions that came up.
Okay. I'll open it up, the public hearing again. Anyone like to speak on this?
I just have one more statement to make, and that is, I knew of a business out of Cottonwood that, when asked, "Oh, what do you want me to do with all the leftover M-E-K?" "Oh, just go dump it out in the washout back." Now, I'm not saying all business owners are shysters, but I'm just saying is beware.
That's why we have ADEQ. All right, I'll close the hearing, and any additional comments from the, yes?
We have tons of businesses that do oil changes and work on vehicles, and I'm pretty confident that they're doing it right. It's not like the old days where you changed your oil and went out in the, the alleyway and poured the oil on the grass and weeds to kill the weeds off. Least I would hope, and that's all we can do. We can't watch everybody every second in what they do. But based on what I'm hearing, I'm quite confident that this company or this business is going to be pretty much doing all their work over the top of concrete, and I would think it's pretty safe.
Anyone else? Okay, I will close the comments and ask for a motion.
Mayor?
Yes?
I move that ordinance number fifteen fifty-nine be read by title only, and the reading of the entire ordinance be waived, and call upon the city clerk to read the ordinance number fifteen fifty-nine by title only.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
unanimous, Your Honor. Ordinance number fifteen fifty-nine, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, amending the Apache Junction, Arizona zoning ordinance by amending the zoning district map, city of Apache Junction, Arizona, changing the zoning district classification for the property described in rezoning case P dash twenty-three dash one twelve dash P-Z. A request by Greg Loper, representing SM Holdings LLC and Storebakanen Sons Construction, Inc., from general commercial B-one to industrial B-five, and a minor general plan amendment from commercial to light industrial business park and industrial, repealing any conflicting provisions and providing for severability.
Now, can I get the main motion?
I move that ordinance number fifteen fifty-nine be read, be fifteen fifty-nine as read by the city clerk be approved and adopted.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. You're welcome. We got any more called to the publics? Just, just one? No, just one?
But, Your Honor, we have one more item.
Bingo license? One more?
We have one more item.
It's not on here. Okay, presentation, discussion, a public hearing, consideration of applicant of Class A bingo license for Rock Shadows RV Resort located at six hundred South Idaho Road.
Thank you, Your Honor. This evening, we just have the one Class A bingo license. This is for Rock Shadows RV Resort located at six hundred South Idaho Road. This is basically a renewal bingo application. They have had a bingo license in many years past. The license did lapse two years ago. They went under new management, and at that time, they also started a remodel, so the organization had no place to play bingo, other than the pool, and they decided that wasn't advantageous. We did request inspections from the Apache Junction Police Department, Building and Safety Division, Planning and Zoning and Superstition Fire, and all correspondents submitted their approval for recommendation. And the applicant is here this evening, if you have any questions, where I'd be happy to answer anything for you.
Any questions? Would the applicant like to say something? Nope. Okay.
Bingo.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes?
I move that the application for a Class A bingo license for Rock Shadows RV Resort be recommended to the Arizona Department Revenue, Department of Revenue for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Call to the public. I would like to remind everyone, the call to the public is courtesy and not required by law. It's a time for the public to express requests, communication, comments, and suggestions. The request to speak forms must have been completed and handled, handed to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Underneath the open meeting law, council cannot engage in a discussion on issues presented, but may respond to criticism, and may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly or place this matter on future agenda for council discussion. There's a three-minute time limit for each speaker, and I have only one. And Mo? Oh. Buried down here, okay. I'm sorry.
Good evening. Mahmud Mayuddin, two-three-four-one, North Apache Trail AG, Arizona, eight-five-one-one-nine. Come, sometime come over here to attend the meeting, what's going on. And our councils and mayors and those people, their mics, they're pretty far away, sometime you can't even hear back over there what kind of question they have, or what they're expressing. And just suggestion or requesting, or maybe we can, city can upgrade the mic, they can attach it to the shares, or have more sensitivity, they can, we can hear it in the back. That's all. You guys can look into it, appreciate it.
All right. Pointed out, I had two more here. Donna Carr.
Donna Carr, Apache Junction resident, I don't have too much to say. I was just wondering if you guys had a chance to check with code compliance on the small solar lights that you get at the dollar store and finding people up to four thousand dollars for having the small solar lights along their property? And that some of these codes that keep getting added seem to be a little bit ridiculous, as far as I'm concerned. And that I brought up at one of the meetings last month, as far as knowing the difference between you just have a complaining neighbor, or if you're actually doing something that's wrong. So I was just wondering if you guys had a chance to check into that, thanks.
We did. We did, there wasn't any.
James Bofrater?
James Bofrater, ten fifty-four, East Roosevelt, here in Apache Junction. Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm here to discuss the non-conformance, formance, ordinance that you have on the books. that you have on the books that you seem to not give a damn about. Recently, you passed, according to what I've been able to glean from zoning and planning, that Super Skies Restaurant, which is a non-conforming business, was allowed to extend their premises. I have lots of questions on that. Rudy's answered some of them this, today, but I'd just like to know why you even have this on, on your books if you're not going to pay attention to it. I've gone to planning and zoning, I was basically given a runaround. I did get some answers tonight. They sent me to code compliance. One gentleman called me back and said that you all okayed it. I went to the city clerk to find out if there was any applications for extension of premises. Actually, there was none evidently, because that's what I was told today. So, like I say, I have lots of questions. And I'm not the only one. The person you sold the property to, that you owned behind the bar, isn't a real happy camper in either. We have noise now that we didn't have before. I mean, it was noisy, but it's increased by 20 to 30 percent. I came home on a Sunday afternoon, and there was music playing loud enough to hear from my front door, which is quite a distance from the bar. So if somebody could get back to me and answer some of these questions, I would appreciate it. I've left my number and stuff, and I think you all need to read the ordinances. Thank you.
Council, any comments?
Yeah? Brian, can you give us a report?
We can give you a report and follow up on that.
And then, is he allowed to comment regarding solar lights?
Can I comment, Joel, on that? We did report that in the weekly report.
Well, unless you want another update.
An update?
Just give another, just do another update.
We'll provide another update then.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get you an update tomorrow.
I will adjourn. Thank you. Thank you.